I thought it would be appropriate and took the liberty to add that on there.
All right, Robert?
Proclamation. Whereas thousands of dedicated telecommunications daily serve the citizens of the United States and Canada by answering their telephone calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible, and whereas the critical functions performed by these professional telecommunications, including those related to forestry and conservation operations, highway safety and maintenance activities, and many other operations performed by federal, state, and local government agencies, and whereas professional telecommunications work to improve the emergency response capabilities of these communication systems through their dedication and participation in training programs, and whereas the Associated Public Safety Communications Offices Incorporated has set aside the third week and able to recognize telecommunications and their crucial role in the protection of life and property, and now therefore we Nicholas Dahlheimer, Solisio, and Robert Plamondon, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Townsend, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th to April 20th to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. In the Town of Townsend, Massachusetts, in order and recognition of our municipalities' telecommunications and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens, given the 16th day of April in the year 2013, Nicholas Dahlheimer Chairman, Solisio Vice Chairman, and Robert Plamondon Clerk. And with that, I will make a motion. Make a motion. We vote to issue a proclamation acknowledging April 14th to 20th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm gonna go through the five sections so we leave everything else for what we're really all here for. 5.1, Board of Selectmen Updates and Reports. Anybody? Anybody? Oh, I'm doing the five so that we have everything else left for 3.2. Anybody?
I make a motion. You need what? I'm sorry. Oh.
Anybody? Okay. 5.2, Town Administrator Updates or Reports.
Nothing from me now.
Okay. 5.3, Review Signed Payroll Warrant.
I make a motion, we review signed payroll warrant out of session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5.4, Review Signed Bills Payable Warrant.
I make a motion, we review signed bills payable warrant out of session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 3.2, Fiscal Year Budget Workshop. Discussion of FY14 Budget. You guys all don't have to be sitting so far away. Certainly, come, welcome, come down.
Well, I'm gonna just run with this, Nick?
Start it and we'll, once the ball rolls, we'll have a hard time stopping it, I'm sure.
Okay. I'll apologize for the probably frequent coughing I still have in shaken the cold that I've had for the last couple of weeks or months. So, I'll do the best I can. The, obviously, the board looked at its departmental budget several months ago as we were putting together the initial framework of the fiscal 14 budget. I'll bring you through a couple of changes that have been made in those budgets, as well as some changes and some background on other department budgets that I think are noteworthy for the board. In summary, the budget that we've put together for next year is about 2% higher than the current fiscal year, 2.1% higher than fiscal 14. And that is, you know, sort of in keeping with what we've been doing over the last several years. We did have the issue last summer and fall with the budget deficit as a result of the outcome of the override votes. So, the fiscal 13 budget was quite a bit higher than fiscal 12, but that was not really by design, that was by fiat. So, that's where we ended up in 13, and that was our baseline for moving forward into 14. Just a little bit of background on revenues. We've basically got the same revenues that we had last year. When I say last year, I mean fiscal 13. The current fiscal year that we're in that runs through June 30th. The big difference between 13 and 14 is the prop 2.5 increase that we're allowed, the 2.5% increase over the prior year, and for that, that amounts to $340,000. Our local receipts, our meals tax money is generally flat with fiscal 13. We've been conservative with our revenue estimates. And then as a result of the intermunicipal agreement that the board signed at the last meeting, at the meeting last week with the Town of Dunstable, we've got an additional, excuse me, $20,000, just shy of $20,000 in revenue that will be coming into us from the Town of Dunstable. So, unless there are any questions from the board on revenues, I'll go through the expenditure piece and tell you where we're spending and how it differs from what you've seen either in 13 or in prior iterations of.
Callan?
Can you just go back on the revenue? I knew we talked about this last Thursday. Is the additional $522,000 that we identified is that, are you saying because we underestimated our receipts from the year before?
522,000 from what?
Well, we had discussed at the Finance Committee meeting what our budget, the $16,471, and at the time, Kim said it only left us $629 in that.
Right, but you're going back to May of 2012, correct?
No, last year, last year's.
Are you going back to the annual town meeting appropriation or the fall town?
Yeah, the annual town.
Right, but then we ended up having to increase our budget by several hundred thousand as a result of the deficit, which we came up with through additional revenues. We had additional aid that we hadn't factored in in the spring of last year, and we made, obviously, we made a $200,000.
Yeah, and free cash too, so we're able to balance, and I understand that, but we're projecting a much higher revenue source this year. And you said you were gonna have Kim update that sheet?
Mm-hmm.
And I could have a copy of it, because I'm just a little confused where the additional projection's coming from.
Yeah, like I, I do have the inflow and outflow sheet if you'd like it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Let me pass this, pass that down to the board members as well. The, I'll try to answer the question to, that's been posed. When you go back to the May 2012 town meeting and you look at the number that was appropriated, and then you compare that to the number that we have currently proposed now, there's a pretty stark increase. What you can't forget is what happened in the intervening months between the adjournment of town meeting and today, which was the failed override in Townsend and the approval of the override in the other two towns, and us having to come up with a way to close the budget deficit that we were facing. So, we had a budget deficit, if you recall, as a result of the override, of $417,000, 417 and change. In order to close that, we did a number of, we did a number of things. We identified some increased revenues, some local receipts, particularly that we increased by about $90,000. We received an additional $83,000 in local aid, and we had our, and we cut our budget by a significant amount as well. When we based, when we built our budget last spring, we built it based on a decrease of 5% of our local aid, and we based it on a level funding of the base, excuse me, local receipts, 5% decrease in local receipts. And we based it on a level funding of the base amount of local aid. Local aid went up, local receipts were coming in better than we expected, and we brought that up as well. This year, we've got three, so we've got all of that still in the budget, all that additional aid, local aid, all that additional local receipts. On top of that, we've got this year, $203,500 that will be transferred out of capital stabilization to pay for the spalding roof. That debt payment is an operating cost as part of our school assessment. We've also got the $340,000 that I talked about early, which is the prop 2.5 amount for fiscal 13, fiscal 14. So, that's how we get, that's how we close that jump from May of 2012 to where we are today. You can't forget about what happened in the fall.
The way that I remember it was when we went to town meeting and when the override was taking place, we had limited information in terms of final amounts of revenues that were going to come in.
Correct.
By the time we got to the discussions of where is this money going to come from, it was later, and we then had final numbers.
That's correct.
So, we had estimated conservatively on the receipts from the state, and it came in higher. Thank you, state. Also, as I recall, we had an unexpected increase in our excise tax revenue, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Excise and other local receipts.
Right, so, I think the point is that when we went to town meeting in last May, we were estimating conservatively based on what we knew at that point in time. There was no crystal ball to tell us that, you know, we were gonna be saved afterwards. So, I think there seems to be, to me, I'm hearing some other folks talk about, well, you know, we weren't, we didn't have to make all of those cuts that you said we were gonna have to make. Well, thank goodness we didn't, because we ended up, and Chief Klein gave a significant amount of money toward that deficit, and his planned spending too. So, just wanna make sure that we're painting that picture of what happened last year accurately.
Right. So, where we are today, the revenue numbers that we're using, we're comfortable with. We're still projecting very conservatively on local receipts. We've, you know, we've got our local aid number, which we think is a reasonable projection based on the information that's available today. A lot could change. The House Ways and Means only released their budget a week ago. So, it's a long, it's a long time coming until the state finalizes their budget. I'm not sure they'll finish it before the start of the fiscal year. It wouldn't be the first time if they were that late. But I'm confident in the numbers and the spending plan that we've put together at this point, that it is balanced, and Kim Fails, the town accountant, is really the check and balance on this, and she's confirmed it, and she has no concerns about the projections that we're using. So, I'll start now, just going through department by department, identifying things that have changed, things that haven't changed, and this is all based on the budget that I gave to the board members on Thursday, and the Finance Committee has the same version of the budget. So, in the Selectmen's budget, there are some changes that are as a result of contractual commitments that the board has made, and also, and through, I should say, in all of the salary lines for non-union personnel, they reflect a 2.5% increase, which the board previously has signed on to. And for other people with a personal services contract, those amounts are in there as well. We don't have anything in for collective bargaining groups yet, because we haven't settled with any. So, Selectmen's budget is adjusted to reflect the changes in the non-union personnel and also to reflect contractual changes. On the second page, accounting is up, and that is a reflection of the intermunicipal agreement that we talked about last week. So, the accounting line, the salary line item, town accountant salary line item is up, but that is going to be offset largely by the.
$20,000.
By the revenue, correct. By the revenue that's coming in from the Town of Dunstable. Also, within the accounting budget, there is a line item for repair and maintenance of equipment. That's the annual user license for the software that the accountant uses. We've taken that, and we'll be talking about the same thing when we get to the collective treasurer. We've taken that annual license maintenance agreement, and we've rolled that into the MIS budget. It's appropriate to have it in MIS rather than have it in the particular department budget.
Which line was that, Andy?
That's the 1355245, repair and maintenance of equipment, goes from 2,000 to zero. So, that 2,000 comes out of the accountant's salary, goes into the MIS budget.
So, this goes down, but the other one goes up?
Correct. Correct. On the next page, in the Treasurer's budget, same thing. There, it's under professional services. There was, it's an $8,000 annual fee for the maintenance of the software. That goes to zero. It goes into MIS, which is at the bottom of the page. The MIS, other purchase services line goes from $3,500.
To $11,800.
To $11,800. And that, the $3,500 that's in there now is for the website maintenance. That's our annual cost for the website, rolling in the $8,000 from Treasury and $2,000 from accounting to bring us up to $11,800. Also, within MIS, we've increased the replacement equipment line, which is the last line, from $4,000 to $6,000 a year. We're asking for trouble if we only put $4,000 into our technology equipment. So, we're boosting that up, and we'll probably continue to do that over a period of years to get to where we need to in order to upgrade our hardware. On the next page, some changes to the clerks and elections. Clerks is up marginally, mostly salary-related. Elections is down substantially. That's a result of the.
Or whack thereof.
That fiscal 13 was a presidential election year, plus we had, three, four, five? Four special elections had or will have before the end of the year. The override votes, two of the override votes were in 13, the Senate primary, that's coming up on the 30th, and then the Senate final election that's in June. So, that drops off significantly to reflect the drop-off in elections of this year. Conservation, we, at the top of the next page, that reflects the consolidation that was approved by the board at the last meeting, where we had separate line items for both the conservation agent and the administrative assistant. We've rolled that into a single position at a single salary. So, there's actually a slight drop-off in that, and as you recall from the fall, there was a decision was made to pay five hours a week of that salary out of the Wetlands Protection Act account. Everything else on that page is pretty much level funded. On facilities, we've dropped, excuse me, we've increased the energy line, which is line 1915210. We've increased that from about $71,000 up to $75,000. We had cut that last spring anyways by a substantial amount. We cut it further in the fall when we were closing the deficit. We're trending okay, but it's close enough that it's a little bit uncomfortable to be cutting it that close. Energy is, energy not only in terms of usage, but in the therm value is pretty tenuous. So, bringing that back up a little bit as a cushion. The other item in that budget is the professional services, which is going from just under $38,000 up to $40,000. We're actually out to bid on that now. That's for the cleaning contract for this building, the library, senior center, and the police station, and so that could change between downtown.
That also wants reductions in the departments that, like, say, which is the library, account, or.
We paid the cleaning contract out of the facilities department, not out of the.
It was originally part of the.
Yeah, up until the, up until the facilities department was created, there were separate lines in each of the department budgets. Those were all consolidated into this.
But not last year, right? Not this current year?
Yeah, it's been there for four or five years.
That's what I mean, so.
But we're just bumping it up a little bit, because we don't know what the contract price is.
But these, the cleaning services are not in the current budget under those other departments.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, that's correct. Sorry, I misunderstood the question.
It's okay.
So, that one, that still could change, but I'm not sure yet. That's it for general government. General government overall goes up about $7,000 over last year. In public safety, police department, again, salaries and wages are adjusted for those positions in which we have contracts in place for the patrolman and anybody, any of the sworn officers, other than the chief and the deputy chief, the wages are still somewhat unknown. We don't have a settled contract yet for those people.
Just a second, Andy, if you have a quick question, because I was thinking about doing.
I just wondered, because the sheet that you handed us that we were using out, there erroneously, the chief's salary was printed incorrectly. I had wondered if you would correct that, the law was according to his contract. It's 99619 on here, and that's the wrong salary.
But it should be 101406, the contract that I gave you.
No, that's for, I'm 13, when you went across.
The fiscal 13 is wrong.
Oh, okay.
And he would like to correct it. Thank you.
Let me just look that up while we're, so I don't forget about it. Okay. Yeah, that change will be, and again, this is.
What should it be, Andy?
It should be 99418. This is the.
418?
418, yeah. The spreadsheet that I've given you today is our working budget spreadsheet. When we get to town meeting, we'll have the regular spreadsheet that people are used to seeing. It won't have, it won't be broken out in this much detail, but we'll make sure that it's correct for those purposes. So, the, just to go through the rest of the police budget, the police budget in total goes up about $25,000. A little bit of that is in vehicles. There is an increase in training, and I think in.
Communication, I see.
Communications is the other way, yeah. But everything else is pretty much level funded. The chief, as we recall last year, made some changes, made some reductions to his budget in order to help us close that gap in the fall. Fire department is up marginally, 13,000 or so. Most of that has to do with per diem salaries or per diem wages. The rest of the budget is pretty much level with 13. The chief has done a good job in holding the line on his budget as difficult as that is. He's moved some money around, increased some lines, decreased other lines, but really the bottom line is it all shakes out to pretty much level fund with the exception of part-time wages. Communication center is up a little bit. We have not settled with the communications union yet, but there is an increase in the wages, and that is for the telecommunications supervisor position, new position that was created in 13 that we left vacant the first half of the year and filled in in March.
That was part of the reduction, making the gap between.
That's correct. That was about a $29,000 savings last year. And so, that position was filled as of March.
I remember that.
Building and other inspectional services, level funded with the exception of wages. Actually, one thing on the building department, consistent with what we spoke of the other night in, when we were talking about the capital planning piece of this, the building inspectors, travel stipend has been created as a separate line item. All of the vehicle-related items have been rolled into that and then.
So, what line item would that be?
That is 2415196, right in the middle.
Okay.
Other travel stipend.
Got it.
That's $4,500. The other vehicle supplies goes from 2742 to zero, and repairs and maintenance of equipment goes from 1,500 to zero.
Right.
The bottom line is it's a change of like $350 or something like that. Everything else on that page stays the same with the exception of the stipend employees, 2.5% increase. Same thing on the next page, everything other than wages remains the same. School assessments, we've talked about these in the past, so these are not new numbers. North Middlesex Assessment went up slightly. We were helped out initially in the, by the minimum local contribution assessment, our north, excuse me, our Nishoba Tech Assessment goes up by about 40 grand.
Andy?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, may I?
Oh, you may.
Total public safety, I've got.
Total public safety, I've got numbers for what's requested in total, but not what it was for 2013 or what it is for 2013.
Oh, okay.
For some reason, those didn't come out.
Apologize for that.
Yeah, that's the only one that I saw that didn't have a subtotal on that. So that you can just see what.
Yeah. I'll get that.
Difference is.
I'll get that.
Did you get fire department, communication center?
Yeah, you've got all of the subgroups, but not the total.
Okay. I'll get that for you.
Same thing on the total education, really.
In highway department, pretty much level funded with the exception of wages for the superintendent. The contract for the employees has not been executed yet. We haven't reached agreement yet, so if and when we do, that will be added in. Highway expenses, high level funded with 13. Snow and ice on the top of the next, oh, sure.
There is, I'm looking on all these pages, there is a total public safety number. The page is outnumbered, but below burial agent and parking clerk is a.
Yeah, it's a total, but it's for just 2014. There isn't a total to compare it to 13.
I see what you're saying. I'm sorry. Okay.
There's a couple of places that subtotal, that total is missing.
I'll get that for you.
Same on streets and highway. I just know that a lot of people like to look at the total.
Yeah, and we'll have that for the town meeting presentation budget as well. For snow and ice, we've increased that by 25,000 consistent with a conversation the board had a month or so ago. Still not quite where I think it should be, but I think this is something that we can work towards and get there over time.
If we have to, we can bump it up another 25.
That's what I'd like to do. I'd like to make an effort to bring it up by 25,000 or so every year up until we get to, say, 200 is a pretty decent number. It's pretty close to our average. 200 to 225 is where I think we should be.
Carol?
Yeah, this is something that I come up on the finance committee as well, and if there is that excess revenue that's being projected, we'd like to add that, at least, I would like to add that in now, because what we did is we took 40,000 from their overtime, put it under snow and ice, we're counting for it out of there. We did boost it up 25,000, but we're already minus 15,000 from where we were in the last year. So at least we like to make it equal, so the 40,000, I have no problem with it being counted for under snow and ice because it's overtime for snow and ice, but I'd hate to short it 15,000.
I don't have a big quarrel with it. You know, I'm a little concerned about, I want to maintain some flexibility as we get to the finish line, but if the board would like to make that adjustment, I won't argue with you on it.
So, just to make sure I understand, you're suggesting that the overtime line be increased?
Yeah.
The snow and ice, I think, is.
We took the 40,000 from his regular budget in the fall and put it under snow and ice.
As part of the effort to close the budget gap.
No, I remember that.
But if you look, we're spending under snow and ice and overtime on average 50,000 a year, so even shorting it, that 50,000 is going to catch up with us plus.
I don't have quarrel with it. You know, like I've said before, we're underfunding snow and ice and have for a number of years, and we need to get it up there whether we do it all in a couple of big moves or we do it over time.
I'm just saying, I agree we should bump it up 25 next year, but once we bump it up, if we go beyond, you know, that 25,000, we can't use that money for anything else. We're locked in.
Well, yeah, if you had a snowless year.
Locked in.
Yeah.
If you had a snowless year, you'd end up with just, it would be a turnback.
Which is not going to happen.
So it goes to free cash. The only problem that you run into is if you go too far, you know, if you get three or four years in a row where you had $400,000 snow and ice budgets, and you said, well, we don't ever want to do this again, let's budget $400,000 a year.
Then you spend 300,000.
And then, yeah, and then you get back to a normal situation. You can't back off when you're snow and ice.
You can't take back the 100 grand if it was 300,000.
So I think it's safe enough if you want to go up to, if you want to go to 175 or something like that, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Does it make a major difference?
I don't know about me there.
Go ahead.
Problem across the board. Carol?
To Mr. Plunden's point, that's why we always budget it under overtime in his regular account. And Mr. Sheen took the idea of budgeting it under snow and ice, but if we budget it back the way we did before last fall, then we wouldn't be locked in if we had a light winter. So that's why we always did it that way. But there's nothing wrong with accounting board under snow and ice either.
Question?
Sure.
I just want to make sure, is this something that the finance committee as a whole felt was necessary or was recommended?
We haven't voted on it. It was just a discussion.
I have no problem with it as long as the, you know, the quorum of the finance committee agrees. Do you have a quorum tonight?
We do.
You do? Okay. Okay?
Chairperson.
Good.
Do I take a formal tally?
Sure.
I'll move the question in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll make that change to 175 then on snow and ice.
So that's just on the bottom line? We put that to 175? Or which line item?
We'll put it into, we'll put it into equipment, probably put it into rental. It just comes off the bottom line anyways.
And you're taking that from where exactly?
That'll come out of the tax levy, come out of brazen appropriate.
Okay.
So we're increasing the budget by 25,000.
So that line item that now says 25,000 will be 50, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next department is streetlights. We had cut that a couple of years ago. We were trending at such a level that we thought that we could safely bring it down and as part of our trimming a couple of years ago. We're starting to trend a little higher, so we're going to bring that back up to 17,500, which I think is where we were three years ago. So we'll increase that from 15,000 to 17,500.
It still says 15, though, right?
Correct, yeah. That'll be reflected in the final budget. One thing related to streetlights, the energy committee is looking at some changes, potential changes to our streetlight program, the town potentially buying the streetlights and potentially converting them to a more efficient fixture. Either way, we are likely to, obviously there's an outlay if we were to buy the lights, but we would typically pay less than we're paying now if we owned them, and the payback period is only typically only a couple of years.
How much of a total investment would that be? Any idea?
I haven't been able to get a price out of unitile yet. They're not real anxious to part with them, even though they can't say no, but they've dragged their feet a little bit in getting us a price on that. So we're still pushing to get that information. Now at the bottom, landfill operations stays the same. Curbside pickup stays the same. We had some conversations earlier, well, last fall and over the winter about that. The board of health prefers to stay with the contract that we've got and try to negotiate some more substantial savings for the next contract that commences in 2015.
Came down almost $30,000 from 2012.
Yeah. Yeah, we dropped it a couple of years ago, and we're trending okay right now. There's been a reduction in the number of barrels and bags you can put out. That's helped us a little bit, and we hope that we can continue to make some improvement there. Cemetery and parks, really nothing changes other than the nominal increase in wages. Same with everything on the, with the next page, on the next page, with the exception of council on aging. Want to bring.
On the cemetery, the money realized from timber harvesting, is that going to be accounted for in this particular budget, or would that be?
That money goes into the general fund. There's an article on the warrant to transfer that money out of the general fund and into the cemetery improvement fund, Roger? Is it?
Cemetery improvement, yeah.
Improvement fund, so that they would have the benefit of those funds. In the council on aging budget, it's a little bit higher than last year. We had a council on aging budget and a senior citizen center budget. Senior citizen center budget only had $350 in it. It seemed a little redundant to have two separate budgets, especially one with so little in it. So we rolled those two funded line items in the senior citizen center budget into the council on aging budget. So that's the only change there. We'll get rid of the senior center budget going forward. Everything else on that page remains the same. I owe you a subtotal for fiscal 13 as well there. Library is the next. That changes.
Can I be back up just please?
Sure.
To veterans agent, what's the status of chapter 115, veterans agent? Has that been any, has he requested any kind of an increase? I know it can vary according to the economy.
An increase in his wage or in his benefits?
In his benefits.
Well, we were at the point a couple of months ago where it looked like he was going to run out of money for benefits. Things have tailed off. I haven't had a chance to sit down with Joe and talk about where we are and where we expect to be at the end of the year. We do have a catch-all line item or a catch-all warrant article in the town meeting budget to adjust fiscal 13 budgets. If we need to increase the veterans' benefits amount, we can do that at town meeting.
Okay.
He did get a reserve fund transfer from the finance committee a few months ago. At that point, it looked like he would run out by the end of the year, but.
I see there was a joke between FY13 was 27,500 and then going 40,000.
Our Finkham reserve fund transfer was over 12,000, so that's.
I'm sorry?
The reserve fund transfer from the finance committee was over 12,000.
Yeah, so the 40,000 reflects, pretty much reflects where he is with his adjusted budget for fiscal 13.
Plus we give back 75 percent, 72-75.
Right, mistake.
And the salary line, Andy?
That's been adjusted consistent with the other stipend positions. He had put in a request requesting an increase in his salary of 1,200, and then when the board voted the stipend increases a couple of weeks ago, we adjusted that in the recommended column.
Okay.
In the library budget, there are the regular increases in wages that all non-union staff has. There's also a new line of 4,036, excuse me, there's moving the line that had 4,036 and moving that around to, from Sunday staffing to other wages. That will allow them to adjust their staffing. They've come in and talked to us in the past about that, adjust their staffing in order to meet the demands of the department. They're eliminating the Sunday hours because of the increased demands during the week. Everything else is pretty close to level for 14. There's a couple of increases in purchase services and in books and DVDs for a total increase of above $9,000. And I'll get you a total one on that culture and rec. Everything else in culture and rec stays the same. Yeah.
Recreation, I know that's like self-funding and stuff, but I'm just trying to remember what the expenses were that were planned for renovation, the stuff that steroids enforced over there.
I think the final vote that recreation took on that was 40,000. Their operation is paid solely out of their revolving accounts, so whatever they bring in in registration fees and other fees goes to pay the salaries and the rent.
So they did come to that agreement, right?
I have to look back. They had voted it back in the spring. I forget.
Yeah, it just came fuzzy after a while.
Yeah, I forget where that ended up. There were some additional discussions.
I mean, it doesn't matter to this. I just happen to think of, I've never really heard what the closure was on it.
Our long-term debt on the next page, I do have a subtotal there for you that doesn't reflect on your spreadsheet. The subtotal for fiscal 13 is 589-232, so we're down about 16,000 from fiscal 13. And we're down almost $100,000 from fiscal 12 on our long-term debt. We've retired some debt over the last couple of years. On the insurance section.
Andy, do we ever get a satisfactory response from the county retirement system with regard to the.
We did not.
Large increase.
No, unfortunately, we haven't, and still trying to get some word out of them, but we've been unsatisfied and.
Have they just totally ignored you or us?
They've pretty much ignored Kathy's calls. And in fact, Kathy and I spoke about this today. We haven't even received our assessment yet for fiscal 14, which we would normally have received by now, so we're working on that.
I realize it may not be in time for town meeting, but I'd be in favor of sending a strongly worded inquiry from the board as to the lack of response, and that's the way they seem to do business, then I think they need to be held accountable for that.
Who are they accountable to? The governor?
Yeah, they're kind of independent. In a way, they're accountable to the PAR Act, the Public Employee Retirement Advisory Commission. They're accountable to the member communities and districts, but in effect, they do whatever they want to do.
I don't like.
I, for one, I.
I just really don't like that. Everybody has to have checks and balances.
I would like to entertain a motion that we direct a town administrator to send a strongly worded letter to them indicating a displeasure at their lack of communication and arrogance.
Explanation, yeah. But I wish there were somebody else I could CC on the letter. That's why I'm.
Well, senator governor, senator, whoever we want to send it to.
Andrea?
When, I believe that it's based on a formula, and the formula, they do it out, and that's what you come out to. There's no reason, unless you can do the formula yourself and come up with a different answer.
But not to get it.
Usually they send us our increases every three years at a time. They give it in three-year increments. Yes, they.
Not anymore, not in the last three years they haven't.
And that way you get a better chance to budget for it. That way it was very good.
Yeah, that would be preferable, and that's one of the concerns we have, is if this is a one-year thing, well, you know, we can manage it. is a one-year thing, well, you know, we can manage it. If it's, if we're looking at a 39% increase this year and the next two years, that's a much, it's a much different story.
In the past, almost historically, the third year is the greatest increase always.
It's just, it makes it difficult if they don't respond to just simply answer that question, you know?
We're talking about $180,000 increase, correct?
Yes.
From my math, quick math, that's a lot of money.
Sure is.
You've got aging population.
Especially when the FY13 budget was $465,000. That's pretty significant and I'm not happy about it. I'm not blaming anybody here. It's just, I don't think we should just sit back and take it and then not send a, you know, I think we need to make some noise on this.
You've got to remember too that it's based on your retirees and we've had a couple go out on disability retirement, so that adds up. And we're going to have a lot of retirees coming up over the next few years, so that number is not going to be going down. And it's been a few years since I've looked, but I almost think how they calculate it out is on their website. I remember doing this before.
Well, all I'm going is by the percentage of increase. In FY 2010, it was $435,000. FY 2013, it only went up $30,000. So there's a three-year, a three-year time span of only $10,000 a year. All of a sudden, we get the next year, we get $180,000. I mean-
So it's like, do we expect $180,000 next year too?
Remember we have, I'm sure, I don't know, you'd need to find out, but you have to remember we had a couple people go out on disability retirement that last year, which wouldn't have affected the previous year.
I still, I'm still, I want some explanation.
I would like to make it known that I'm not happy that we haven't gotten some kind of an explanation, even if it's just, you know, what Carolyn said. That's all.
You might be able to find that out on the website, you can calculate it out.
I don't want to calculate it. I want them to tell me, expect that it's going to be $150,000 for the next two years after this. I just want them to tell me so that we can budget for it. That's all.
So I'll make a motion that we direct the town administrator to send a strongly worded letter inquiring as to the rationale and the justification for the amount of the increase and an explanation as to a lack of a response.
And may I add something else?
Excuse me?
Their expectation-
Right.
Of, you know, how do we budget for the next two years after this?
I will expand my motion to include that.
Who's that, you seconding?
Amen, second, yes.
Motion's being seconded. Any further discussion? All fair.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're a resident, of course.
But I need clarification or I will call you up tonight at 12:30.
Oh, yeah, I turned my phone off.
Oh, okay. Do you have the number? Who exactly are you sending this letter to?
Middlesex Retirement.
Middlesex or Middlesex County?
Middlesex County Retirement.
Thank you.
Commission.
I think they're opposite in Borica.
You need to figure out who to CC on.
And when did you get that amount from them, Andy?
Isn't their office in Borica?
Yes.
Well, that scares me.
They just got an individual remaining that was over there.
They sent out notice to the communities within their region that they were looking at two different increases, two scenarios. I believe one was 6.5%, one was 8% or 8.5%, something to that effect. And they were going to take a vote to increase the assessments by that percentage. That was several months ago. We never heard what the final outcome is. So we had plugged in a worst-case scenario several months ago and haven't heard anything from them and they've been unresponsive when we've reached out to them, so it could be that it's a little bit less than that, but we don't know. Other insurance items in health insurance, we've increased that. We've already been told by Maya that our health insurance will go up 6.5%. So we factored that in there. We are having some discussions with collective bargaining groups about changes to our insurance that I don't want to get into in any detail since it is a collective bargaining item, but there may be, there may be some possibility for improvements in that next year or in future years. Property liability insurance, we haven't received a quote yet for next year. We're budgeting a 10% increase over last year, but hopefully it will come in less than that, so. And then, so the, and then at the bottom of the spreadsheet, you'll see that I've identified a number of offsets. And when we, when we do the budget in the town meeting presentation format, within the various departmental budgets, we'll have offset amounts. For instance, in the ambulance, the fire EMS budget will have the ambulance receipts offset. In this case, $250,000 for fiscal 14. We also transfer certain funds out of our Comcast receipts to offset the cost of MIS and West Townsend Reading Room, sale of lots from the cemetery and Title V receipts. I've called those out here so that we can get a better sense of what the bottom-line number will be at town meeting. And that's the $17,244 number. Again, a couple of things that we talked about, the snow and ice and a couple of other things that are not reflected in there. But that currently, as we entered the room tonight, was an increase of $371,689 over last year, over fiscal 13, which again is 2.1% over-
Could you say it again, please?
$371,689.
$371,689.
Thank you.
And it's 2.1%.
I was wondering if the healthcare increase at all, if the $8,000 that we voted at town meeting to look into healthcare, if that article was going to come back into the general fund at the end of the fiscal year.
We're using that.
For?
Consulting services.
Okay.
We entered into a contract with Cook &amp; Company, a benefits consulting firm, to assist us in looking at some changes to our health insurance. And that process has been ongoing for several months and I suspect will continue on for several months. And then if there's nothing else on the general fund, the last page is the Water Department Enterprise Budget. Really, the only significant change there is the increase in the intermunicipal agreement, the money that the Water Department pays us for certain services that we provide, insurances and things like that. Yeah, so everything else is, otherwise, it's a pretty level-funded budget. I expect that the next time you see that we talk about the budget, it will be in the form that we present to town meeting. Because of the detail in this, and I know it's a little confusing to go back and forth between various versions of the budget, however, I think it's beneficial for the board to see the detail and then we'll convert this to the regular town meeting presentation that we typically use and we'll get that up. As soon as that's ready, we'll put that up in draft form on the town's website.
So where do we go from here as far as FinCon's concerned?
Basically, there were questions about the town administrator's contract.
So I've heard.
Yeah, I think everyone's heard. But we both thought the easiest way would be to have the board have discussion about how it came about as far as the financial pieces of the contract. And I was actually thinking today, I seen pro conversations even before Greg Barnes left, that the salary for the administrator was on the low end. And I would assume that what we have presented is a result of kind of looking at what other towns do.
Yeah, Andy, actually, if you don't mind, I don't mind giving this to Nancy because I've looked at it extensively. This is some of the surrounding towns. I mean, I don't need to even put it that, you know, to indicate, like for instance, I think Shirley was 96, I think Papo was 96. And again, it's always, you know, this position in general in large part has always long been, you know, what we considered or, you know, some portion of us considered a little light. I think that, you know, Carolyn would indicate that, you know, two previous administrators that she indicates she's fond of, you know, left for substantial raises. And perhaps if that wasn't the case, that may not have happened.
I just wanted to back up before we go to the Board's Selectments Budget. I just want to be sure there was increases in the police budget that you went over and it was fine. That's the only one that we haven't voted on yet or decided on, the increase in expenses for the police.
What was your question?
That, I just didn't see it in my notes. I was looking at the revenue, so that's, that's fine. Okay, all right. That's all. I just wanted to make sure that was the only question I had on the budget.
Okay, Andrea?
About the total department budget?
Just increase in income and explained it to us and I was looking at the revenue sheet when you were discussing it, so I just, so it's good.
Andrea?
Besides town here's population, I did that myself. What other criteria? Because some, for example, like Lunenburg, their administrator has the schools and with that has to do the health insurance and procurement and all the stuff.
Oh, yeah, he's not on the-
And we don't have that. Okay, but-
I think that would skew it up, to be honest. I think they're at about 117, I think.
The things on there, those are the differences that you compared?
Among others.
What do you have on the sheet?
No one's making up.
Hey, if you look at a town like even Ashburnham, which has, which has a population significantly, about a third, third less than Townsend, they're paying their FY13 salary is $113,000. Now, Mr. Sheen's salary, I believe, will go up to 95, 97, and then I believe $100,000, correct?
And the jobs they do are comparable?
Town administrator.
Oh, no, but that's a title. That's not necessarily a job. Any title can be composed of any number of different tasks.
Well, I think it was a cross-section of a number of town administrators across a number of different towns. Granted, it's kind of like, you know, neither, I don't think any position in any town is going to overlay exactly the same, but it's close, so when taking an average across a number of towns, you get a fairly good cross-section of, you know, various positions. Because granted, things are going to be different between, you know, towns, but slightly, there'll be some variation.
I think too, that the comparisons that we're making are FY13 salaries. I would expect that in most cases, everybody else's is going to go up a bit too. And what we're talking about is $95,000 for, compared to all of these, which puts that one pretty close to the bottom there.
Well, I think the other part of it too, that I'm, you know, sort of going to illustrate the fact too, and of course, I think I was quoted in the paper as well, this isn't necessarily just about Andy in as much as it's also about the position itself. I mean, going forward down the road, if Andy were, you know, to pursue other endeavors, you know, I think the town would be well-served to be equipped to, you know, have a wide range, be able to do a number of different things depending on, or depending on, you know, the professional and, you know, there's some ability to, you know, have the flexibility to do that. For example, when Shirley had actually gotten their town administrator, I believe that when they went out to search, the previous administrator was getting about 78. And they had narrowed the field down. I believe that they settled on for about 96. And there was, you know, granted, some concern with that. However, you know, to get the employee that I think that the board at the time had wanted, that's the number. So, I mean, you know, just food for thought. Andrea?
Forecasting is a very nice thing. What we usually do though is handle it when the issue was up. When Greg left, he said the position was underfunded and we added $20,000 more to the salary then.
I think we went from 70 to 20.
It wasn't 20,000.
And then another 10 got added though to it.
No.
I think Greg was around about 70 and then it's currently-
Greg was making about 70, because I was on the board, Greg was making about $70,000.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was incorrect in the amount.
Yeah.
I would think that would be, that's the way we usually handle it and it's a reasonable way to handle it.
But we're still playing catch-up on this one. And the reason I'm saying we're playing catch-up on this one was when we hired this particular administrator, one of the things that we bounced back and forth was the salary. And we all felt as though it should have been more like 90 at that time. All right? But because of the budget problems that were going on and because of other things, we backed off on that, intentionally backed off on that. And I think that was actually your recommendation. I remember, I remember town meeting and I remember, okay, fine, I'll back down on it, but-
It certainly wasn't my personal record.
Oh, yeah, no, well, that's-
No, you wanted 20 and we would only go 10.
Exactly. Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, we started off with undervaluing that position.
Well, that was the other part of it too, is I remember one comment at that particular town meeting and of course, don't misunderstand me, I mean, the number, you know-
It's a big number.
It is a big jump and I don't think this board took it very lightly by doing that, you know, because again, we knew what, you know, we knew what the response was going to be. Sometimes, you know, doing, you know, sometimes decisions aren't always an easy one. However, I do remember at the town meeting, I believe it was what, three years ago, an individual stood up, I'm not going to name them, but I remember who it was, and when we went up to 80, I believe the comment was, are you sure that's enough? And that was three years ago. There hasn't been an increase since.
The, may I?
Of course.
The other thing is, I mean, and this isn't a forecasting issue. This really is not a forecasting issue. This is partially retention and it's also partially just plain making sure that we're grading that job accurately now. If we don't, it's not as easy to find a town administrator as it is to find, you know, administrative assistant of some sort.
Well, see, that's one of the problems. It's never really been graded as the charter says or as the bylaw defines the job, but it's really never been defined fine enough, I think, for people to understand exactly what is done.
I'm not understanding what you mean.
I'm sorry, I can't do any better than that.
I can barely hear what you're saying. Like looking down, talking, it makes it difficult to interpret what you're saying when you're-
Okay.
I'm not being rude, I'm just being honest with you.
Oh, no, no, that's fine, I'm sorry.
It's frustrating because you're looking down, talking, and we're trying to comprehend what you're saying.
I was looking at my paperwork, I'm sorry. Or your paperwork, actually. When you compare the jobs across that administrators do from town to town, there's a lot of difference. We have never seen that delineation compared town to town across. So it's hard to appreciate the job that ours administrator, and this isn't just Andy, this was true of Greg and everyone we've ever had, in comparison to what other town administrators do in other towns, their responsibilities.
Let me ask you a question. Since there are department heads who have obviously considerable amount of responsibility in this town, some more than others, but still, being a department head inherently comes with a lot of personal responsibility. Being a town administrator, as far as I'm concerned, is the top job and is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the town. And to not compensate that job adequately is a disservice to the position. It's not, it's not, I don't see anyone in any department head with more responsibility than the town administrator, quite frankly. So how can you, you know, say that that is, that's the prevailing salary level and that's actually below what the average is? So, you know, to do a definitive analysis of every single aspect of the position, we know what the job involves. It's responsible for the day-to-day- It's, it's responsible for the day-to-day operations of the town.
But see, there, there's where we're different, right there. I feel he's responsible for the day-to-day responsibilities of you people in your office. He's responsible to supervise the day-to-day expenses of the other departments, the other departments, the police chief, the fire chief, whatever. They're responsible for their day-to-day expenses and things. That's why they have the salaries they get. He's just to supervise and be helpful to them. He's not over them. He's your employee.
May I?
You may.
When department head meetings are called, it is the town administrator that calls them. When we give direction to the town administrator for the kind of increase we would expect, or we would want people to stay within, it is the town administrator that works with all of those people.
And that's a supervisor.
Hold on, hold on, okay? This is a big job with a lot of overseeing of responsibility across departments. Doesn't have to be the one to tell, to, to do the schedule for the police, or to do the day-to-day police operations, but certainly someone who works with all of the heads of all of the departments.
That's exactly what I said.
But, but, but you seem to be saying that in a more despairing way. It's not, it's not that. I'm looking at it as, wow, that's a lot of responsibility. It's not just to do our things. He's not our secretary.
No, no, I didn't say that. I said his direct responsibility for day-to-day bills. But look at the bills you have. You have the utilities, you have all kinds of things under you. They're very huge responsibilities. We won't go there. The thing is, is that I felt that you downcasted the role of the department heads themselves. It's a tandem thing, but you are, he works at your direction. He doesn't direct himself.
He directs day-to-day.
I, I would, I would submit that there's a lot of individual judgment that goes into decisions that he makes, on which he does not consult...
On day-to-day?
On a day-to-day basis, on which he does not call up us separately and say, "What should I do in this position?"
Well, that's my, listen, he'll be me like, yeah.
You get paid, people get paid for making quality decisions, and managing on an ongoing basis. That's what a manager does. You can call him manager, administrator, whatever. But that's what they get paid for. They get paid for making quality decisions on an ongoing basis. That's, and it's, and it's reflective of the amount of responsibility that they have. I mean, I work in a, in a large organization, and it works that way. The more responsibility you have, the more you get paid. That's just a fact of life.
Nancy, did you have a question?
I have a question. I had more of a comment, kind of, on things that were said. It's looking to make sure we're feeling compensated, our town administrator, but in, in my mind, I mean, it's attracting the right people, and also retaining the right people. I mean, we can't go through this every two, three, four years. It's not good for the town to not have that stability and that longevity. So to say, you know, it's fine for now, and if he leaves, we'll look at it down the road, I don't think that's the right thing for the town.
Well, yeah, and to sort of follow up on that comment, I think in this particular position, continuity isn't something to be overlooked. If we have to do a search every, you know, three to five years, it may not be the best thing. Hold on, Sue. Carolyn?
These responsibilities and things are similar to all the towns. I don't think that has, for me, that has none, this is the first time we've been able to discuss it. I'm just looking at the contract increases themselves. When he first started, or they changed over, we appropriated that money, we were smack in the middle of Pepperle and Ashby. And I believe we still are. Pepperle's about ninety-six, Ashby's about fifty-four. They have a few thousand more, and Pepperle, a few thousand less than Ashby. So, to me, eighty, eighty-five thousand was a very fair salary for a community this size. In fact, I thought it was pretty well compensated. That's my opinion. Now, does he deserve an increase? Short, inconsistent with what everybody else has received, and what he's recommended, which is two-point-five percent. Also, I noticed in his contract that you have a thousand-dollar stipend because he has a cellphone, plus he has his personnel for the health insurance of two thousand. So that bumps the salary up to ninety-eight thousand.
Well, I'd, I'd indicate that their reimbursements are not salary.
Okay, well, I mean, but he, he asked to account for it on his note, too.
No, not reemb...
Are you doing a direct reimbursement for his cellphone? Because it said it was a thousand-dollar stipend.
Well, we anticipated that the cost of the cellphone alone would be far in excess of that, so when you talk direct...
If you're doing a direct reimbursement, that's fine to do it that way, but were you paying a flat-out stipend in as part of a salary?
I mean, salary versus compensation, I think, is different depending on, you know, when you, what, do your taxes. I think there's a separate schedule for reimburse, employee reimbursements, that I think this would fall under, not necessarily under taxable salary. However...
You could supply him with a cellphone, that's fine. But that's not my decision, that was a contract that you made. You were, this is the first time we're discussing it, like I said, and these are, these are my thoughts.
Right, no, and to sort of follow up on that, of course, we all know that the town administrator's contract, or, you know, position, wasn't included in the wage and classification study. I know that some other town employees at that time got a lot more than two-and-a-half percent. This, of course, you know, sort of tries to bring some equality to that position in the same way that the compensation plan does, because this wasn't evaluated and scored because it was a contractual position.
No, and I agree with that, but if you remember, and I hate to use anybody that's not here, but the land use coordinator, you did a salary survey with her, and she was well under five dollars of an average. So if we're going to say, okay, now we're going to bring everybody up to average, we can't do it for some and not for others, which was the argument we had before.
Well, no, I think, and again, not to put, you know, certain fingers on it, I believe, to bring that into salary into, I'm trying to remember, but, you know, to bring that in, into quote-unquote "average," I think, would have, you know, put it way over twenty percent to bring in the average. This, of course, to bring it close to average is something like eighteen percent. Now, keep in mind, of course, that when we went from, you know, with the, you know, the town individuals that were compensated in the wage classification have also gotten two-step increases that the town administrator didn't get either. So if you factor that into the, you know, into the percentage, meaning, all right, if, you know, person X in the wage classification study said got fourteen, and then two-and-a-half, and two-and-a-half, we're not really that far off the mark as far as averages and percentages go.
But then our deputy, our new deputy chief and our highway superintendent received nothing for the last five years, so...
Well, when we did the deputy chief's contract, there was, you know, that was addressed as far as, you know, compensation goes.
Coming this July 1st.
If, if we're talking, going to the average, looking at comparisons to all of these other towns, taking Townsend's out of it, the average is a hundred and two thousand dollars. Are you suggesting we go to the average of a hundred and two thousand dollars?
I didn't suggest that.
No, I didn't think so. So what we're saying is...
I said, I, when I looked at it...
But, but, but think about it from our perspective, when we discuss this, in terms of what was the right salary, okay? We're looking at the salary including Townsend, you know, that kind of skews it. We're looking at the average salary not including Townsend. And these are all towns that we can compare ourselves to, and we can very easily call up and say, hey, what's your guy doing? And we know it's going to be the same kinds of things. And it's a hundred and two thousand, and we're, we're saying ninety-five, so...
But you're, you're gonna, when you do this type of comparison, it's a little skewed because you've got to look at longevity factors. How long has a town administrator been in the position that they're at in other communities?
I disagree. I think you're talking about value of a position.
Well, that's, that's, I'm not talking about value. I'm talking about the contract itself, and that's where I'm coming from. That's not where the committee's coming from. This is the first time we've discussed it, so we don't have any type of consensus.
Right, I mean, there's, you know, there, you know, perhaps there's a number of factors, you know, why we didn't go to the average. We're still a little under. And I remember, I think, I want to, I want to say it was in the Pittsburgh Sentinel, geez, oh, about two, three years ago. And I remember, you know, they rated all the, I think it was about ten or twelve of them, about, you know, of, you know, head, head of government, town administrators, I think the mayor of Pittsburgh. I think Townsend was third from last, as far as, you know, compensated, you know, you know, if you want to talk, you know, hierarchy, you know, the guy at the top, at least from the day-to-day perspective. And, and just, you know, again, something I'd read a couple of years ago.
I have one other thing. If you're talking about, and I know a lot of people like to quote the charter, and, and I mean rightfully so, and the charter says something about the selectmen, and the selectmen's job. And the selectmen's job is specifically called out to be non-administrative. We will not be involved in the day-to-day responsibilities. That sets a clear line between what we, as a board, do on a day-to-day basis compared to the person that we hire to run the place on a day-to-day basis. I have a full-time job somewhere else. I don't get paid for this position, and...
I thought we got a dollar.
And we get a dollar that they still owe me from four years ago.
Yeah, Andy, we're going to pick up the...
So...
I've been waiting longer than you, don't worry.
Gee.
With interest, you probably have to buy seven dollars.
But, but, but my point is, it, it's well-spelled out in the charter, and, and for a very good reason. I think it's important that, that the board members are not involved in the day-to-day, because, to tell you the truth, I wouldn't want the CEO, or, you know, the, the board of directors of, of a company always coming to someone and saying, "Did you do this? Did you do that?" So we heavily, our town, our board and our town, heavily rely on this position to make the kinds of decisions and, and day-to-day conversations with other people, think, people who come for advice on, on things that they're running into, all kinds of personnel issues, anything like that. We don't have to be concerned with it because it's taken care of, and that, that's worth a lot of, a lot of money.
Andrea?
This is just, this is just being petty, I guess. Ultimately, you are to do the day-to-day, though, because ultimately, you sign the warrant every week, which you sign off on the other department's work. His work, his supervisory work, you say, this is good, you sign off on the warrant, the warrants. So you affirm his actions and all of the department's actions every week.
Well, the way you say that, it sounds like we're being administrative, and I think we're very careful not to be. I think we're also very careful not to consult with each other. I think there have been times, there have been times that I would have very much liked to sit and have a cup of coffee after a meeting with my fellow board members, but to tell you the truth, I haven't wanted to do that, and none of us would want to do that, because we would never want to be accused of meeting outside of a board. We don't email each other, we don't talk to each other outside of a board meeting, and we depend on our town administrator to do the job. So I feel very strongly how important this position is.
Oh, I do say it was important.
And signing a warrant is saying, yeah, okay, we're putting our name on that thing, and I don't take it lightly, but, you know, that doesn't mean that I'm going through everything and questioning every single thing on there, and how, how many pennies they're spending to do something for the cemetery.
You should go through it, not question everything, because your department has to do a very good job. I have another contract question, though.
Sure, sure, sure.
On removal from office.
Oh, sure, yes.
I hate this. Absolutely, from this standpoint, what if, what do you call it, would, would you give somebody money for termination?
Severance?
Severance, thanks. The word just wouldn't pop into my mind. You give him nine months severance, which would be fair, but he can also get unemployment by this contract. I believe it should be one or the other, because unemployment is fifty-two, I always, I think it's over fifty-two weeks. It's a huge expense for the town. So it should be either one or the other. If you're going to terminate him, it's either a severance or unemployment.
Well, the other, well, the other part of that, too, and sort of the way that I sort of rationalized that particular thing, is the last sentence allows the town to terminate for cause. And, of course, you know, terminating for cause, you know, the town won't have an obligation to pay it at all. And, of course, that being said, if you're also terminated for cause, you also wouldn't be eligible for unemployment. You know, the other part of it, too, I mean, there's a couple of different ways that this can cut. For instance, if the town were to, you know, quote-unquote, yep, terminate him, you know, there's some discussion about, you know, at what point along the way, and this sort of, you know, there's the argument that, hey, listen, you know, if it was terminated for not cause, he's got a whole contract you can look at, so the town could be on the hook for the whole thing. But when you limit it to something short of that, you know, so like, let's say that he hypothetically, of course, you know, Andy, I'm just speaking hypothetically, you know, he was, if one year from now terminated, you know, here's nine months. Rather than, you know, agreeing, saying, hey, you terminated without cause, I got three years' worth of contract here, where's the rest of it? So, looking at it from that angle, you've now restricted what could be a twenty-four-month liability to a nine.
Except for the two years of unemployment insurance.
Um, well, I mean, again, I'm not...
The library, I believe, they had it in lieu of, of unemployment, but I'm not, I'm not really sure.
Yeah?
It's my understanding that he would end up getting both anyway, because unemployment would ask what compensation, or, or what, what's your financial situation because of this...
Well, that's the other part of it, too.
Dislocation from your job, and they'd take that into account before he'd be able to collect unemployment.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, don't quote me on the intricacies of unemployment law, because I think, I mean, I don't even know what, you know, how long somebody's eligible to collect unemployment for. I think it's two years, to be honest.
It depends on the unemployment rate in the state, and what the federal government believes the overall economic situation.
Right, I mean, that's the other thing, too, and then query, you know, whether or not he'd be eligible after this nine months, or if it was viewed at...
That would be separate, and that's not determined by the town. That would be determined by the state of Massachusetts, under their guidelines.
Hold on, Carolyn?
Been, been around for a long time, and I was here in two thousand and one when this office was slammed with petition articles to go on town meeting warrant, demanding that the selectmen were not allowed to enter into personal contracts because of severance packages. I don't have an opinion on a severance package one way or another, but my only problem in the finances is that you've introduced severance packages back into other contracts, and that's basically an unfunded liability. I'm not a fan of, of that. So that's my comment on that. I'm glad we moved off the worth and the value of the town administrator, because I am looking just at the contract itself. I think that's important to stay on that conversation.
Yeah, I would, sort of, I mean, you know, I don't know, that's the other part of it, too, as far as, you know, the severance, you know, the, well, the town would have to evaluate that at the time, if that was the way the town was going to go. Again, this is sort of one of these, you know, hypotheticals, where if we ever get to the point where, you know, you ever get into this discussion, well, basically, you know, it's one of the factors to consider if, you know, again, again, we're talking about, you know, this is the only time that this would be enacted, or even looked at, is if the town were to just walk in one day and be like, hey, see you later.
He'd rather them to sue us.
So, so that, that passage, that passage in the contract would not apply if he found another job?
Correct. I don't...
There's a lot of confusion out there.
Oh, yeah, no.
That's the way I read it, too, but...
No, it's a removal slash termination, if he were to...
That's what I read.
If he were to, you know, quote-unquote, resign.
There on that issue, so...
Yeah, if it was, you know, if the town requested it, that's one thing. If he were to, you know, we didn't, you know, that wasn't the spirit of that, and that, I don't think was the intent of either party. Andrea?
Another question. What's the difference between the travel in number five and the travel in sixteen? In sixteen, it says it will be reimbursed per mileage at the then current Internal Revenue Service rate.
Well, I think sixteen's restricted to, you know, expenses due in professional development, wherein I think that, you know, Section Five deals with travel associated, like, here in town.
It says professional and office travel, meetings, occasions, required time duties in the office, which professional, the quality, that's a professional development.
Yeah, I mean, the way that I'd rationalize that is, you know, the expenses as far as your cellphone goes, I sort of envisioned, I mean, I think, you know, the cost of Andy's annual cellphone, and Andy don't, you know, quote, you know, don't hit me if I get it wrong, but I believe, is something in excess of a thousand dollars a year, so as far as the analysis goes...
The building inspector's plan's four-hundred. So I had wondered about that. But I just want to know the difference in the travel. What is it, is this travel, see, if, if he's to be reimbursed for the times, he goes on business to the library, and, well, you can kind of spit on the fire department, that's not too far, the police department, you know, anywhere, Pepperle, Lunenburg, he should be paid at the growing rate, not just a lump sum for the year, or a part, a part of a lump sum. Part of it's for the phone, and part of it's for this undefined travel. The travel should either be defined, or you should just reimburse them at the regular travel rate. I don't understand what that's for. I don't understand what that's for. And I was pretty sure it wasn't for travel to and from work, since that's a taxable issue.
Oh, yeah, no, of course not.
You can do that, it's a taxable issue though, that's all.
Yeah, I think they distinguish, yeah, it's commutable and, you know, what's commutable and what isn't. I mean, the way that I'd rationalized, you know, section five was, you know, basically the cellphone just, you know, exceeded up and beyond before we even got to the mileage discussions. When I was analyzing it, at least in my own mind, is a thousand bucks, you know, as far as cellphone, it didn't even cover the full annual cellphone bill, so it's like, as far as the mileage part of it, I mean, I didn't get to that part of, you know, the analysis because I don't, I don't, to be honest with you, I'm not sure we sort of get there.
Did you want Andy to give this?
Oh, sure, Andy, would you like to, uh, give your five cents or fifty-five?
Yeah, just, my, just to, um, to give the, some background on, on my thinking as I proposed this, section five was for the routine travel around town, in town, in the area, Pittsburgh, Lunberg, wherever it happens to be. The other, the other section, the professional development and, and reimbursements, that's, you know, that's if I go, DOR holds training sessions out in Holyoke and Randolph and places like that, Sturbridge. I go to those on occasion depending on, on my schedule and, and what the topics are. That would be, that was the, uh, the idea behind the reimbursements on, on those. They're non-routine, they're, they're out of the ordinary and that's, um, and likewise, if, if I was fortunate enough to be able to go to a, to one of the professional development conferences, it would be also for that as well.
So say you put in, I don't know how many miles, I suppose you could use somebody else who, who puts in per mileage in town to go to the library and that stuff. You're not going to put in for any mileage except for that thousand dollars. If you go to Sturbridge or a conference, then you're going to put in, or, you know, professional development, then you're going to put in at, at the reimbursable rate, at the Internal Revenue reimbursable rate.
Correct.
Now, I understand, thank you.
Anybody else? Um, okay. What's, what's next? Anything next?
I think you've reached the end of the budget.
Okay, Andrea, yes?
Oh, you know, I had, um, this for Andy. I had a little disagreement, a couple bucks here and there through the thing. I found out what it was. It, on the wage steps, it's two and a half, Kim told him to do, uh, I mean, fifty-two weeks. She told him to do fifty-two point two, so that's what accounted for the little differences. So then when I found that out, then we were, we were perfectly in line.
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, it raises another, another small point, but one that we don't want to overlook. We'll go through in the next week or so, we'll confirm all of the, all the waged lines to make sure that they are based on, on the correct two and a half percent and also based, as Andrea mentioned, on the fifty-two point two week schedule. Just to make sure that we're, that we don't end up at the end of the year, the end of next June, and somebody's forty dollars short or twenty dollars short or something like that. So there could be some, some minor, um, massaging of those numbers, but it'll be insignificant really in the big picture.
And rounding salaries up, if you have...
And we'll round salaries up too, for the next dollar.
Okay. Well...
Sir?
You want to be here?
Make a motion, we adjourn tonight's meeting at seven thirty-seven.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye, folks.